Six o'clock on Thursday, August twenty one. Welcome, everybody, to the regular Select Board meeting. I'm calling the meeting to order. First thing is set adjust agenda. Does anybody have anything to add subtract?
You do.
Thank you. I need to, I would like to add a short executive session. Legal, it's a legal issue, premature disclosure, which would Put the town at a disadvantage. So.
A motion to add an executive session?
So that's executive session number three, right?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have. Could you have a motion to approve?
Well, Kayla motion.
Second.
Oh, you already motioned.
Kayla really did.
I stuck it.
Where you at? I don't know. All right. So we got motion in a second. All in favor of approving the amended agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. That's everyone. So motion carries. Communication from the audience. Anybody here to discuss anything that is not on the agenda? All right. Moving along. Next is we have to approve two sets of minutes. One set from our regular meeting on August seventh and a special meeting on August eleventh.
Motion to approve the regular select board meeting minutes of August seventh and the minutes of the special select board meeting of August eleventh as written.
Second. Any comments or anything on the minutes? They look good.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. All in favor of approving both sets of minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, Town Manager's report, Mr. Upson.
All right. So we recently responded to the sanitary survey, which is done for the water system, addressing the roof issues at Highway Acres Storage Tank, more frequent chlorine monitoring with an increased chlorine residual, and source metering concerns. We've responded to the state. We're working with staff to come up with an action plan to address the roof issue. We are trying to raise the chlorine residual slightly with more routine monitoring. We have to take three samples every, they have to be at a minimum of ninety minutes apart. So it's increased the time that the weekend rounds are happening. And we're looking into constant monitoring of the chlorine residual, chlorine residual with an analyzer. So we're trying to automate it a little bit. We have to pull a building permit to do a small project at the storage facility. Because of the wood material, it's, there's a lot of moisture in the tank. So we have to remediate some of the moisture issues and then come up with a more permanent solution for a roof on that facility up there.
Which facility?
The Highway Acres Storage Tank. So we're working on that, back and forth with the state.
Oh, yeah, okay. Somehow my mind was over at Glen Side and I'm like, how do we have a problem with that roof? Okay, I'm with you now, by the way.
We have scheduled a tank inspection for Glen Side. So they have to go in, do an ROV of the tank. We can do it without draining it.
Oh, good.
And then that has to happen every five years. After the first ten. And we've reached ten years of that tank.
Sorry, so the, so the Highway Acres issue is just the roof?
Mm-hmm.
Is that like a cinder block or concrete building or?
It's a concrete tank.
Yeah.
And it's a wood structured roof. With trusses.
Just like bridges? Yeah.
Yeah.
Which was a problem.
Yeah. We're trying to get to this one before it becomes a real problem.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's a lot smaller too. So it's a smaller problem.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Great.
Ongoing FEMA discussions with the lift stations, the fire station, and the wastewater treatment facility. A and E is working on a more granular cost estimate of the wastewater treatment facility as requested by FEMA. That's, it's ongoing. We're giving them information from our fixed assets. And we're just trying, they're trying to get through, they're working hard for us. And that, that work with FEMA is all ongoing. We have, I now have a week, bi-weekly meeting for forty-seven, twenty, and forty-eight, ten. We're about to merge them.
Which are?
The two disasters.
Oh.
Yeah. So that's happening in two weeks. So that should be, that, that would be the most efficient way to deal with it instead of having two separate meetings. So that's good. We had our pre-construction meeting for the final EWP project from twenty twenty-four, which is the River House project in East Hardwick. So that should be happening next week. The construction company is mobilizing and they're going to start that bank stabilization for the River House. And the design work with Horizons Engineering has begun on the five EWP projects for twenty twenty-five.
Great.
Which include Brush Street down here. And that should be coming down in the next month or so.
Oh, good.
That house, along with the four others buyouts. The state is managing those contractors. I've also been coordinating with V-Trans for grant and aid funds on two locations. Tucker Brook, which I'll let our road foreman talk about, and Bridgeman Hill, the intersection of Town Farm, which is becoming, which has be, was a problem in both of the floods. We're trying to do some mitigation up there. To, for that to be okay and take a lot more water. Engineering, more engineering that's happening. For the bridge, the bridge crossings, or the river crossings, the borings were completed this week on four sites. And the site surveys have been finished, so they're starting to design the structures. The next step is structural design. So we can get to a place where we can bid some of these out for twenty twenty-six construction season. East Hardwick Bridge number thirty-one is the first one that we'd like to target for the, for bidding through the winter. That's up in East Hardwick, on the Greensboro Town Line.
The one that, and we talked about being in the bend.
Right.
Okay.
And we need, we will have to coordinate with the state to determine whether or not that structure needs to be put back. Because it's called out in several plans, but that's a pinch point. So there's gonna be some, some push and pull there, I think. The town of Greensboro wants it back in because it's increased traffic down Main Street in the bend. But it's called out in two basin, river basin plans that it's, it's an issue.
So, okay. Are they looking at widening the?
It's gonna have to be a fairly large structure in order to mitigate.
Or maybe it doesn't go back?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Momley Engineering has finished the wetland delineation, which took a whole growing season. The state required wetland delineation on Hardwick Farms. They can progress with the design, or they have it and hope, they have it pretty close. So hopefully, we can get that going, coordinating with the farmer on when the most ideal time can be to pull that crossing. But he's, he's willing to work with the town.
Is that also twenty twenty-six construction season?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Just several citizen concerns regarding property tax bills this week. Handling health officer complaints over the past several weeks, kind of an uptick in that. And recently had a meeting with SE Group. Go ahead.
Danny says he can't hear us. Oops. He put it in the chat that he can't hear us.
This happened last night.
Can you hear me now?
Danny, can you hear us?
Oh, move that down, the top one. Echo cancelling speaker.
Danny, can you hear us now? Oh.
Okay.
Love it.
Do you want me to go back to the beginning?
No.
Continued discussions with SE Group and CCS regarding pedestrian bridge construction timeline. So they recently sent back a whole list of kind of non-negotiables with the contract and it all centered around our timeline. So obviously, we have to lengthen this timeline. This project was slated to be finished in the fall of twenty twenty-five and it's, it was an unrealistic timeline according to the contractor in the contract, that, that we put forward in the contract. So we're trying to just figure out the best way forward. We're gonna have to bring the funders into this conversation. We were able to get reimbursed, which we have discussed, for one of the USDA grants. So that's a plus. And then the other, the other funders, we're gonna have to communicate with them about the, the realistic timeline for this project.
Do you have, okay, do you have any sense of what that might be or really totally unsure?
We, one of the questions from the contractor was, we cannot wait until July to get into the river. If the river is low, we need to ask the state to amend the permit to be able to get into the river sooner, which can be done. It does say in the permit, SE Group needs to consult with Engineering Ventures, but it does say that, you know, special permit conditions can apply if we have conversations with them. So really getting in there if the river's low and doing the work and, and trying to just capitalize on the good weather.
Next year?
Yeah.
So how do we even have money next year?
Everything is in place still.
But the grant money?
We've expended.
Only extended till December thirty-first?
One grant, yes.
Okay.
The one USDA grant. Two grants. So this.
One American, the other USDA.
Yeah. So that's why we need to bring them to the table.
Okay.
These are, this is the reality.
They, didn't they have that contract in June? So, yeah.
Yeah. They did.
Yeah. So we're talking about July.
And they, they were pushing back on the timeframe. It's an unrealistic project for them to get done in four months. And only being able to work in the river in a short period of time. Just relating with the contractor.
Yeah.
Totally. And then last thing, we need to schedule a joint meeting with the HED Board of Commissioners in September. And I've got two dates here, the twenty-third and the twenty-sixth.
Are you asking for?
What days of the week are this?
A Tuesday and a Thursday.
Monday, Tuesday, and a Friday.
No, Tuesday and Thursday, the twenty-third and the twenty-fifth. Sorry. Twenty, twenty, twenty-third and the twenty-fifth. Tuesday or Thursday.
Is there a rough time?
Weekend set time, yeah. You can think about it and get back to me.
I have any time on the twelv, after you have the twenty-fifth and the twenty-third, sorry, this afternoon, I'm good.
Either of those?
I guess something afternoon on the twenty-fifth, evening, or late afternoons. Late afternoon, evening would be better for me.
So like, what about?
Oh, never mind, that's the twenty-fourth. Carry on.
What about a five-thirty meeting? Or a five o'clock meeting?
On what day?
Either of those, the twenty-third or the twenty-fifth.
I could do a five or five-thirty. Me too.
Kayla?
Either, either.
Okay. Let's shoot for five-thirty on the twenty-third.
Danny, can you do that? Okay.
And we'll just wait and see if the commissioners can make that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could we do, can this group do the twenty-third or the twenty-fifth at five-thirty? We could offer them those two. Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Twenty-third or twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
All right?
Great.
That's what I got.
That was quite a bit.
Just the tip of the iceberg.
So is it just the one property on Brush Street that got the buyout?
No, there's five.
On Brush Street?
Well, the second property on Brush Street is still in process. We haven't closed on that one.
We don't know yet.
Right. They're still asking for information, which we're giving them to when we ask. You miss anything?
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Next up, Road Foreman report, Mr. Fadden.
Oh, well, didn't really do much right. Of course, still to draw in plus for our chlorine. So the roads that we really did great was Hardwick Farms and Governing and Hardwick Bridgeman, college chloride on Monday, still haven't seen it yet. So, but anyways, on that part. Been spending most of our time up on Wapakiki Tucker, Tucker Brook Road doing that. Trying to get rid of a grant funding that we ended up getting one year ago?
Two years ago.
Two years ago, but because of the flooding. So where the money was supposed to go, can't go there because that was part of FEMA and stuff like that. So we had to switch to a different spot. So we gotta get that money gone by the end of the month, which is next week, which we should have it all done, hopefully by Monday or Tuesday. So that road should be done complete.
And that's like a ditching and?
That's ditching.
Grant.
Yeah, grant aid, yeah, for stone.
Yeah.
What we tried to do today, since we've got so much three-inch dent grade that came off from all the twelve, twelve call edge minus, we're actually using that for a base.
Oh, nice.
So we're gonna try that and that's what we did out there. We actually built the road up to that first and we've been trucking back and forth from Danville today to cover it up with a stay mat for the, for the, for the top of it. So Mike did a pretty good job out there. He got a pretty good crown, crown on it right right now. So, well, when we were out there, I don't like leaving things short, so we ended up ditching the entire road that went up to the blind camp or the old blind camp now that went up there. So we got that road up completely done too. Crushing, Trevor told me they'll be back in September eighth, week of the eighth, to start doing our gravel, gravel and stuff. So we start all the gravel, good and gravel, but then we still got to do the rest of Tucker Brook. What's that called? Hazards mitigation. So we're gonna start on that too, because I wanna get that ditched stone out of there. And plus the gravel dust down below while we're ditching stuff, so I can run that back to the pit so they can crush all, all that material and stuff instead of throwing it away somewhere. And that's what we've been doing. Some of our ditched stone that we've been reclaiming, we've been actually taking it back to the pit, dumping it up there so they could re-crush it, so we could use, use, use that material and stuff. We've done a few things around building and stuff. Ed was up on North Main Street there yesterday, they're cutting off the edge fixing the shoulder work and up on Center Road.
That looks really nice, probably.
Yeah, we started seeing where it started washing, so Ed, 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 you up there, you did a good job there. Now you did all that with the tool pad, so. So you did, did good and stuff, so. Besides that, hopefully within another week, not next week, probably the following week after that, we'll get back on to the meter pits, see if we can't get another twelve, twelve more done.
Same area?
What's that?
In the same area?
Wow, you could get another six or seven more to do up on the same area.
Okay.
So that would make a total eighteen up there. Then we'll just kind of scatter out from there and start hitting here and there, so. Both of you?
And we're gonna be making a plan for the intersection of Bridgeman and?
Yep. We've got that road, that work has been approved. So it's replacing, we got it, we have to have a, get a stream alteration permit for a core replacement. And then we're ditching and diverting, re-diverting some water up there for the next year's grant and aid money, twenty twenty, FY twenty-six.
We got till next year to spend that money.
Yeah. But we gotta pre-approved, we have to get pre-approved for it.
So you got the plan?
Yes.
And that'll help that not be a problem anymore?
Intersection up.
Cause that's been a problem.
Upgrade a couple of corners there and stuff.
Yeah.
Redid the entire area and stuff, so.
Okay, great.
Dealing with the reservoir here, hopefully in a few, few weeks to get that done, so. We'll be busy.
Yeah, sounds it. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, more questions for Tony? Thank you. Police Department report, does anybody have any?
They, they've been working on two pretty serious cases. One of which they just made an arrest, it was in the paper. They were assisting the SP. And they've got another serious case they're working on right now.
Okay.
Everything is shift coverage, all that stuff is going on.
Okay.
Morale is good.
Good?
Yeah.
Good? All right. Do we wanna announce that we have a car for sale?
Sure.
We have an old police car for sale, if anybody wants that, contact.
The, the lights have been taken out.
Well.
Yeah.
It's a car that was, it was owned by the town, used by the police.
Yeah. You don't get to use the lights.
Called the Town Manager's office.
Can we get the cage of the spotlights?
No. It's been on Preppord Farm once at least, right?
It's, it's a sedan.
It's been on Preppord Farm.
Okay. Great. Next, Hardwick Electric report, and we have Sarah, please, here.
So progress is being made. It's, it's nice to see some of the planning actually go into action at this point. We're moving forward on the AS metering infrastructure project. We're citing for the DCUs, which will communicate all of that data to the main server. Expect to be ordering those soon and training, initial training is next week for how the various systems work together. We have the GIS system, field collection is still ongoing. However, we're probably eighty percent done with the field collection. In fact, it's already been put into use today. We had an outage and I was able to identify the transformer size and see that that was likely the issue. And I was sitting at my desk instead of rolling tires. So it's already proven to be a beneficial tool and validating that data is gonna be extremely valuable going forward. In addition, we are continuing to work through succession planning and professional development. We've been sending folks to specific training and preparation for these projects and we're larger system improvement and construction projects in the future. And working through some organizational updates and alignment of roles and responsibilities so that we can better support these projects going forward. So working through that process as well. The hydro station is undergoing still, it's an A and E study with FEMA. And we received the initial report and have a meeting next week with the various stakeholders and government entities to make sure that we can identify whatever design criteria are required to get that funded, that reimbursement. So essentially, is it a five-year flood or a hundred-year flood for various components of the facility? And so once we have that, then our consultant will proceed with actually preparing the options and construction costs. So that is ongoing and going through our audit now. So the, it's busy, but we're, we're trying to continuously improve. In fact, we had a staff meeting yesterday. We're able to just kind of take time to sit together and actually identify what these projects are, short and long-term priorities and what the mission is long-term. And ultimately, it's to encourage, you know, energy democracy. Where folks can see and manage their own energy usage and we can support that. So that's, yeah.
Great. I have two questions.
Sure.
One is the field collection.
Yes.
There was several reports, Montgomery Road or Center Road, I believe, and it matched the description of the blue midsize SUV. Is that the same one that's going out and collecting? They have a, a tag on the side of the car? Is it the same car? Cause?
It should be. I mean, so they, they have a decal that's on the side of the trucks and their, or their vehicles and they're supposed to be wearing, you know, a hat and also stickers. So they can at least put it on their iPad or whatever it is they're used to collect.
Okay. And that was, that was happening this past week?
Yes.
And is it gonna happen the following week?
I assume so. They're not out this week, but they usually do a couple weeks here and there because they've got several, several different utilities to work with.
Okay. That's what I told the police department when they were receiving their reports.
Yeah. And the, we are having them check in every day and report whether, or, you know, the rate they're gonna be for the week. So if there's any questions, just have people call or the police department, please.
Okay. Cool. And then the hydro, will that be this, generate the same size, the same amount? Or will they upsize it at all if they rebuild it?
By default, the technology is, if it's new, I'm not sure that we're gonna be in a position to prepare to replace this sort of situation. And if it's newer, chances are probably even more efficient are pretty high. Just in general, based on the equipment and current, so.
Nice. That's a plus.
I mean, well, I don't think it'll be substantially, you know, higher capacity, but it was just under one megawatt before, so.
Nice. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Glad to hear that metering project is coming along.
Very same.
Yeah. Thought it was gonna be farther out. All right, and then move us on to item one. Select Board to consider reappointing Lucy Zenzian to the Hardwick Conservation Commission for three years, remaining on a four-year term. And we have a letter of interest in our packet. And it's.
So moved.
Great.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any says aye, any opposed? So motion carries. Thank you, Lucy, for serving on the Conservation Commission, are continuing to. Item two, Select Board to consider two grant proposals for the CBDG-dr grant for the Downtown Hardwick Flood Mitigation Scoping Study and for the Confluence Flood Plane Restoration Project and sign resolutions. Did you wanna speak to us about this, Tracy?
Yes, briefly. So deja vu all over here, I know it feels like you're putting a group fist to test. This is, these are resolutions required for the actual grant proposal that Heather, the proposals Heather's preparing. And the repetition here is just because each funder has their own system for how they want verification that the governing body is good with us doing this. So I'm sorry about that, it's just, it is what it is. It's also compressed because, so you normally wouldn't be getting these one right on top of the number, but this CBPGDR grant period, application period is super compressed. So, I mean, Heather's gonna have to have a draft, a drafty draft, as she's called it, ready by next week because we have to be posting warning for a hearing next week. It's very, very tight timeframe, but that's why this is coming so soon on the heels of your other approvals. But I will also just, I wanna thank you all for, for approving our going for the ready funding because it, I don't know that we could, would have the capacity to do this, especially on such a compressed timeframe without Heather, so. I'm so grateful. And she's, she's floating away. And hoping that her information has been. You have the resolutions in front of you.
I do, yeah.
Process, do you?
Yeah, I'll just.
As usual?
I will, I think I'll read them, just cause it seems, or I'll read one of them, they're the same, aren't they?
Well, there's one for each of the projects, so you can just say, are you comfortable?
Yeah.
And they're given amounts. So they also, you're approving specific amount of the grant.
The amounts are not on the resolution, though.
Yeah.
They're on this.
They're on the application.
Yeah, 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 they'll be on the application.
And one of them is a planning grant and one of them is an implementation grant. Danny's got a question.
Danny?
Gotta run. Bye, Danny.
Oh, bye, Danny. Oh.
I'm gonna, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, bye.
Just for point of information, the planning grant is gonna be, we're gonna be requesting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the planning grant. For the mitigation grant, which is a flood plane restoration, we're asking for one point five million.
An implementation, not.
Implementation, sorry. Implementation grant. So they're, they're very different levels of funding.
So, and just to describe what the, so the, what they are, so the planning grant?
Is for, that, so the two hundred and fifty thousand would fund a scoping study of the Loma del Rey River as it runs through our downtown, specifically looking at the riverbanks. Hopefully finding some different things that we might be able to do to stabilize them, store them, reinforce them, I don't even know, reinforce is a good word to use, but you know, to mitigate future damage to our downtown should we have another catastrophic flooding event.
And just to remind people, our downtown river corridor was threatened by a service station. Um, we had washouts behind Broshe's um garage. We had washouts on Rush Street that left those houses dangling.
Our pedestrian bridge.
The pedestrian bridge.
The retaining wall.
The retaining wall was cracked, so.
Water in the basements of buildings, like the Grace, the old firehouse building, they've built it up, water in the basements, and so there was, yeah.
So, so this is pretty important for our downtown.
Exactly.
And the first step is to do this planning step.
This, this project was, was already applied for in brick grant.
And that's.
And the brick grant, that program got canceled, so this is the pivot.
Right.
And this will give us thirty percent engineering, I believe.
Ten percent.
Ten percent. Yeah, ten percent. Thank you.
And then flood plain restoration is the.
So that's um, that is uh looking at the fourteen acre parcel that's downstream of the confluence with the Cooper Brook on the other side of the river. Um, and that, that ha- that is an active flood plain. It already acts as a flood plain. And I, Christian discovered that back in the eighties, they did a restoration project there, you know, I don't know if it was defined as benching per se, but they basically created more space for water to go. But in all the successive flooding that's occurred since the eighties, it's filled back, you know, silt has been deposited, 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 and so it no longer holds the, it doesn't provide as much flood storage as it could. And so this would actually be a construction project to to restore that flood plain. And I don't wanna use the wrong terminology, but I mean, uh, flood benching is probably gonna be part of that, so we're creating space for water to.
Creating capacity.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright.
And that's the more expensive, so that's the one way.
Which would benefit the, likely benefit Wolcott Street, businesses on Wolcott Street, the Granite Street, historical district, and that area. And around Atkins Field and all that.
Right.
And these, these projects are very well known to other engineering that has been done. Um, so these, this is, these are the, the mitigation projects that we are pushing to get done to help with flood.
Great.
I can motion to approve the two grant proposals for the CBDG DR grant, the downtown Hardwick flood mitigation scoping study and for the confluence flood plain restoration project.
And sign the resolution.
And sign the resolutions.
Second.
I guess I'm having a little, a little panic attack that I might have the percentage of design work incorrect and what I just, I might have said the wrong thing.
That's okay.
You said ten, I said thirty.
Yeah.
We'll forgive you.
Probably twenty.
We'll call it ten to thirty.
Okay.
There's some amount. We'll still sign the resolution.
Okay, we'll also need a public hearing for this.
Yeah.
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 Oh. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, so we have, uh, I guess, uh, I'm not gonna read these. So the, you just described the whole projects. This, the resolutions basically say that we wanna do it and for both of them. And um, yeah, they're, we're gonna.
There's no match on these.
Right. Yeah, it's great. Great funding, it's great projects, and we definitely need to do them.
And these resolutions will be up on the website.
Great.
Somebody wants to read them.
Okay. You wanna read them, they'll be on the website. So.
Because Danny's not here, we like free money.
Yeah, so.
Well, with, with that, yeah.
So any other discussion on these?
And it can be a combined public hearing, did we figure that out?
Yes. Sorry, I didn't get permission. Because we're applying for two grants, we have permission to do one, one notice in the paper, saying that it's for two grants and one here.
Great.
Can we add, if we, if we pass the resolution for the, for the road, just have a big public hearing?
What's that?
We haven't gotten it yet.
Oh, yeah. We haven't gotten it yet.
Alright, so.
I don't wanna, we can't double dip.
No.
So, on that one, cause that's a site visit.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't think that's, I, yeah.
So motion on the table is to approve the.
She seconded it.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, you don't wanna restate?
I mean, I'm sorry.
Okay, it was good. To approve the grant applications and to sign the um, the resolutions. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed. Motion carries, so thank you for putting and working on this. These are really important projects and forward to seeing them happen. Um, next is item three, select board to discuss the next step for the Hardwick Essential Services Development Project Possible Action. Uh, design development proposal from Vermont Integrated Architecture, and I know you've been working on this.
Yeah. Um, so this is nothing we have to act on tonight, okay? I just wanna fill you guys in on some, um, I put several um pieces of information in the select board packet. The one that I presented to you, I believe, um, is the basic, the cover, the cover sheet packet of, the cover sheet proposal. So, um, Andrea from VIA broke it down into phases. Obviously, we've completed phase one and two. The next phase is design development, kinda talks about what it is, um, and what we're getting out of it. And on the page five, kinda breaks it down into costs, okay? So we currently have, uh, in our capital for the town garage and the fire station, um, a hundred and thirty six thousand, or a hundred and thirty six thousand five hundred dollars roughly, okay? We're about a hundred and five thousand dollars short of this proposal to do the next phase of this design. So we have a gap in our funding. We'll likely cover some of this gap from FEMA A and E for the fire station. That's where we would plug some of that money in. Um, Hardwick Rescue is not, can, I haven't used any funding sources from Hardwick Rescue, so there's that piece. Um, I can't speak for them. And then any other gaps, we would roll into potentially a loan for the, for a design of this. Um, if, if we got to that point. So moving along in this project, we have to come up with some more money to be able to continue with this project.
Is that okay to have budget that they gave us?
Yeah.
That's the design budget?
So that's, so does, that is the, that is to bring it to?
Like a shovel-ready design?
No, phase three would be the shovel-ready.
Okay.
The conclusion of phase three.
Okay.
But the total amount, if you're asking about the total of the million dollar thing, that brings us all the way through a completed building for.
Ribboned.
Technical and engineering.
Yeah.
That's basically their fee for the whole project for design and oversight.
Yeah, it's the design, bidding, public outreach.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oversight.
Thank you.
So I think they laid this out really nicely.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with a lot of good information, and it just shows us where we're at in the project, what investments we need to make, and where our gaps are. So we have money set aside in capital for these two buildings that will likely, you know, build in the same spot. We're gonna have some re- reimbursement funds for the fire station, which we'll be able to plug into this. Um, obvi- definitely A and E money, design, engineering, and um, architecture. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna do my best to fill this hole so we can keep moving forward with this. So.
Can, can you, just to zoom out for a minute? The reason to keep pushing forward is to get something that we can bring to the voters for town meeting and say, we need to do a bond. This is how the whole thing looks.
Yeah.
Public outreach ahead of time. People know we're talking about building, they'll know how much it's expected to cost.
Yeah.
And we'll be able to vote on a, we'll be able to hold a bond vote for the portion of it that's not covered through other funds.
Correct.
If we don't continue with this funding, I mean, if we don't continue with this design right now.
This project.
This project.
Continue with design development, project development.
We don't keep, stay on target, then we basically, it won't be ready for that town meeting and we'd have, we'd essentially wait a year unless we called a special town meeting.
And everything just costs more a year.
And everything just costs more.
And then, I have a couple other questions.
Yeah.
If that's the right time. Um, right, so you're basically, to recap what you're, just so I understand what you're saying here. If we, if we miss a year, then we're, also the cost of design is going to go up.
Well.
Inevitably.
The cost of everything goes up.
I wouldn't look at it as missing a year. I would look at it as.
Staying on.
Carrying this boulder forward, the, and this is like what we need to keep doing. This is, this is what we need to keep.
Right now, we need two hundred forty two thousand dollars for design development, according to the budget.
We have a shortfall. If, if we decide.
But that's the total that we would need.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, but we have some money that is already kind of allocated.
For the buildings.
Definitely allocated.
Cap- capital funds for the buildings.
What would happen, though? I mean, we don't wanna use all of that for this, cause we need to, we need to have some capital for the buildings, just in case we need it.
But we, we budget for operations of the building.
Maintenance.
So this is for capital projects.
It would be okay to spend all of the capital because, um, you know, assuming that we move forward and we build it, then we end up with no money in our capital account for those buildings. But the buildings are brand new.
Right, so it's like the sewer, it's like the sewer project where like.
Right.
So then we start saving again.
This is why we're saving this money.
Right. No, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question.
Um, so we are then, in order to continue with the design development, we need to come up with, can you repeat, what was that?
Hundred and five.
We have a, we have a gap of a hundred and five thousand dollars. And I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to fill some of that gap with the fire station A and E funds from FEMA.
Because um, more than a third of this project is fire station.
Correct.
And you're gonna reach out to Hardwick Rescue as well?
Hardwick Rescue has a portion of this i- i- if they wanna continue partnering with us in the project.
Okay. And I just have another theoretical question, sorry, a lot of questions.
Hmm.
Very um.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just because I, just because I haven't been a part of the steering committee, and so seeing the, kind of, the initial design was the first time really seeing it.
Yeah.
Um, do we feel like there's enough room for those three entities to be in that space in this kind of first draft?
Good question for.
So assuming there's an emergency in the middle of the day, when the road crew is also there, I think, just like assuming like max capacity, we have all trucks out, all fire department trucks, all ambulances. Is this enough room for those to be all in action? I don't think it's gonna be very often that that happens, but like.
Yeah, because during the day for fire, I mean, you're lucky for you have four or five guys now.
Yeah.
And some of them are coming right from the road crew.
Yeah.
So.
Cause they'll have less.
As long as they spark the grader on our way.
I love the concept. I think, and also like having EMTs and fire next to each other makes a ton of sense. It's just a question of like.
Yeah, they, so the, through the, the first two phases, they, the program of the buildings have been closely looked at and the turning radiuses.
Yeah.
And aprons of the building have been taken into consideration, so they have worked through some of those scenarios.
My feeling in sitting through those things is that all those things that OP just mentioned, like the circulation of vehicles, I think that's all fine in the design. Uh, my, my thing, the thing that I came away with was, well, that we're shrinking the room for the sand pile. There's just less room there. The road crew is used to being able to stockpile whatever they need easily, cause there's plenty of space.
Yeah.
And with this design, there's room for everything that's programmed there, but there's not room, there's not like an extra room.
No, cause the only thing we're gonna be able to stockpile there is probably just one understanding.
And so.
Not the entire amount, so.
And then what happens, like, we often make that space available to like the fiber companies who leave their equipment over the weekend and stuff like that. That basically won't be possible. Like, there's not gonna be room for extra trailers and like.
Well, that parking area should still be there.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's being interrupted.
Okay.
Or actually on the other side of the road because that's still technically owned by the railroad.
And we're still, we're literally relining it, which would help that, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
And what becomes of the old fire station?
Uh, we'd like to, to put that into a flood plain restoration, more flood storage.
Yeah, makes sense.
So it'd be low, low bond, potentially.
A building would have to be eight feet.
Thanks for that.
A building, the first floor of a building, down there would have to be eight feet higher than it currently is.
Hold on.
If it's in, if it's an essential services building, a critical facility. Yeah.
So.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Just letting you know.
I have no problem with that.
No, no, I'm just letting you know that that, that area is, um, there's some design flaw, there's some, using that area for any sort of critical facility is.
Clearly.
Questionable. Yeah.
So then, basically, it's Vermont, and I'm sorry if I'm missing else, but it's Vermont Integrated Architecture that hired, that has hired the other, what we see, those.
They sub, yeah, they'll sub out all.
They subbed out Engineering Ventures to like put this together, basically.
Each one of the, each one of the, the MEP, the mechanical, electrical plumbing, um, and Civil provided proposals which were lumped into this proposal. So those numbers all match up.
So then, obviously, it's preliminary, but Engineering Ventures is, is saying that their design would be basically thirteen mil, their project.
That was the project estimate.
That's the total project.
Right.
Total project estimate, yeah.
Okay. And that's just if they did it, or if they, that was their assumption, like.
It's, no, if they, that's the construction.
Okay. That's a good estimate of what the construction.
Of what the project.
Okay.
That's, I think that's the total project, but there's that disconstruction.
Well, it's, so there's total project construction cost, which is twelve point nine, and there's site work cost, which is two mil, so it's really fourteen point nine.
Right.
Is their estimate?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. I, I just wanna throw out as a point of reference, just because it's still on my mind when we're looking at like, I don't know, first blush, a million dollars for the architectural and engineering might seem like a lot. But as Kaylee just noted, it's estimated at twelve million dollar plus two, so fourteen and a half million dollar construction. Just for reference, Yellow Barn was about nine million dollars of construction, so substantially less. Architectural and engineering was, I think, close to eight hundred. So I feel like this is like, and that was a while ago. So I feel like this is a, is a reasonably priced proposal.
And as they continue with the project, um, design or the project development, that they will re- refine that estimate.
Right, of course.
Yeah.
Of course. And then that's like put out to bed and all that other stuff.
Correct.
So, but then, so, okay, so we've got there, the Engineering Ventures was fourteen point nine. I don't mean to like focus on the numbers. I just wanna get.
You're fine.
A sense, but.
Yeah, this is good.
So Engineering Ventures is fourteen point nine, that doesn't include, include the one for the Vermont Integrated Architecture.
Right.
So it's, so the, the million is separate. The design million is like completely separate from.
It's on top of.
That's, that's baked in, that's baked into the es- the construction estimate. Because they, they, all of their costs are considered in the square foot estimate, per square foot in the estimate.
Okay.
So it's typically, it's a percentage. If you look at that, the cost estimate of the project, there's a percentage of the, the architecture and the mechanical, actual plumbing and civil.
Right, and ten percent, which is what you're saying here, Eric, is like actually fairly reasonable.
Hmm. And it's less.
Yeah, it's less than ten percent.
Yeah.
It's seven point seven six percent.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These are all great questions.
I think it's also worth pointing out that we will, so what's been done to date is kind of a conceptual, um, uh, schematic of can this stuff actually fit on Creamery Road? If we choose to move forward, there'll be a more formal design, and with that step is also public outreach.
Yeah.
Um, to, to get everybody up to speed.
To bring, to bring everybody into the project, public buy-in.
So it does seem like, Tom, it does feel like everything will fit in terms of the things that are drawn there. It's just.
For us, material wise, it won't be there.
It'll be tight.
Right. But we have the pit, uh, we have.
Right, and that's where, you know, we usually like bring down like the mudstones.
Yeah.
And, you know, we usually have some of that at the garage. You can see here, the water's already there. We just scoop up the bowl.
Yeah.
You know, just gonna have to rotate it around where, you know, we're gonna have to keep the pit open up there, so.
At least a lower part.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we don't really, I mean, as part of this process, we did try to think, is there a better way, like?
Or a better location?
Right, but yes, a better location, or should we split things up? But it, I mean, there's, it's a very convenient location right here.
Hmm. But if, if we do public engagement and the public comes and there's some great ideas, then like we can.
Hit it.
Yeah. Nothing's in stone.
Just in dollars.
Yeah.
Right, so you don't need us to really make any decisions tonight. It's just like.
Just an information, just, yeah.
Great.
But at some point, we do have to decide if we wanna say yes, please move ahead.
We need to keep carrying this ball forward.
Yeah.
And I hope to have, I hope to try to, every, you know, meeting, come to you with less of a gap in this, this proposal amount. So it can be more manageable for us.
But we do need to guess, we are in the.
We will need to make a decision.
Probably in September.
Yeah.
Yeah.
September, October.
Yeah.
So.
That's great.
Yeah.
Alright, I love it. Keep moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, next is item four, select board to adopt a resolution to throw up the section. Next is, I enforce, Select Board to adopt a resolution to throw up the section of road located at two eighty-three South Main Street and set a public hearing date. Have a thing somewhere. So that's the resolution, right?
Yeah, October sixteenth.
October sixteenth is the...
Public hearing.
Public hearing. I'm just gonna read this out, because I think it describes it reasonably well. So this is the resolution to initiate discontinuance of Town Highway, a portion of Town Highway three sixteen. Whereas the town of Hardwick maintains an official Town Highway map and certificate of highway mileage as required by statute, which includes Town Highway three sixteen, a minor highway segment located adjacent to two eighty-three North Main Street, and whereas the Select Board has determined that a portion of Town Highway three sixteen no longer serves a public necessity or convenience, and is no longer maintained for public use, and may be subject to discontinuance pursuant to nineteen BSA chapter seven, and whereas the discontinuance of this segment may reduce the town's long-term liability, clarify property boundaries, and support appropriate land use and public safety goals for the North Main Street area. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Select Board of the town of Hardwick as follows. One, Select Board hereby initiates proceedings to dis- discontinue a segment of Town Highway three sixteen, extending from the intersection of North Main Street to its terminus located at two eighty-three North Main Street, and it's approximately zero point zero three miles of road. Two, a site visit and public hearing shall be held pursuant to nineteen BSA, uh, seven oh nine on October the sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, at five thirty PM. Well, a site visit and a hearing, and it's located at the, at or near the main entrance to the Hazen Union High School. Three, the town shall issue, uh, written notice of the proposed discontinuous and discontinuance and hearing to all abutting landowners, the Hardwick Planning Commission, and VDA, and other interested parties at least thirty days prior to the hearing date and post-public notice as required by law. Four, following the hearing, Select Board shall consider the public good, necessity, convenience, and shall issue a formal written decision with findings, a road description, any damages awarded, if applicable.
I motion to adopt a resolution to throw up the section of road located at two eighty-three South Main Street and to set the public hearing date for October...
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Second.
So we can do a site visit?
Is it South Main Street or North Main Street?
On the agenda, or on the resolution?
In the agenda.
North Main Street.
Yes, north.
Um, so we can do a public hearing, site visit and public hearing right before the Select Board meeting on that same night, at six. We can do that, okay.
Pretty convenient, okay.
What do you want to do?
That just seems tight to be there.
Well, it's not far.
Yeah, okay.
It's close, and, um, wait...
Often they're only fifty minutes or so.
Yeah, it'll, will pass an hour, be enough, right before this Select Board.
It's a meeting, and we have to be back here by six.
Right, I figure we could do a site visit for fifteen minutes, transition down here, and have a public hearing, or we could hold the whole thing there, have a public hearing there as well. You can do that, we did that for Billy Hazen Road.
We did.
Okay.
You did. We had a pizza party. And, and bring pizza, sounds good. So we had a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We did have a second. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that was everyone anyway, so motion carries. Thank you, and thanks for getting started on this process, and we'll have to sign, we gotta sign a thing here. Next is item five, Select Board to discuss the townhouse egress project and consider using twenty-two thousand of town capital funds to help complete the project.
It's actually accessibility and egress, so we have...
Yeah, oh, it's the, okay.
Accessibility to the stage, and then egress from the balcony.
Right.
Yeah.
Snuck into the agenda. So we had, um, the lump sum bid, uh, there were, um, some additions, there were two change orders for a total of, I believe, twenty-eight thousand. Um, we had grant funds, we had capital, and we had nonprofit funds from N E K Arts, um, and there were some unexpected costs, um, some of which were, um, waterline not being where it should have been, so there was some foundation issues, and then some finishes that we needed to address, some material changes, um, so it was a, it was a project with some cost overruns. So we're looking to, we have a gap, and we need to close that gap, and the twenty-two thousand would be, um, what we need, which would include using more capital from, for the townhouse capital.
And what do we have in that townhouse capital line?
I believe there's twenty-four thousand left. Could be wrong on that. I was gonna bring up my, it's right around twen- twenty-four, because we just put in another ten, I believe. I was gonna bring up...
It's more than twenty-two.
It's close.
I was gonna say twenty-four, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's close, but I think there's still, that would be draining that capital, yeah.
Yeah, and that is the, that is the townhouse line and that capital building's schedule?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's what, the town took the twenty thousand that was part of this project from the start, so it was committed twenty thousand, but now we need more.
We added some, some of the other additions where we closed in the basement, the entrance, um, so we added, extended the roof, um, and closed in the, the path down to the bulkhead. Um, what else were some additions? Just the change in material, um, that we had to, there was some increased costs associated with the fact that some of the, um, the structure, the existing structure of the townhouse had a fire, so basically that wall was all charred.
Really?
So they had to...
On the inside when they opened it up?
Yeah, so there's...
There was more work in there when they opened the wall.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, just as a little reminder, that's a, it's a town-owned building...
Correct.
That is, um, old and used for a lot of public events, and the access to the balcony has been, um, restricted because of egress reasons, the, just accessibility of the building has been in need of some improvement, and so this project addresses all those things. And we have, and we have this money in the cap, in our capital buildings budget on the line for the townhouse.
So that was already previously allocated to the town initially.
Essentially.
Yeah, and we've already put in...
Yeah.
And we've, uh, we had a fifty thousand dollar grant, another twenty thousand dollar grant, and then there's more, there's...
The, yeah, Netarts fundraised, um, from our annual campaigns, because this has been a five-year stretch, so we've fundraised for, we've put in roughly two hundred thousand already.
Into this project?
And a hundred and thirty thousand into this project, a hundred and seventy-eight of that is to the construction company so far, and we have limited funds left.
So does this close, so this amount will close out the...
I don't know if that's true. Do we know that's true?
Uh, we're, we saw the closeout, where this is a estimate, where...
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
It's gonna come close.
Hmm?
It's gotta come close.
It's coming close, yeah. Okay.
I can motion to approve using twenty-two thousand dollars of the townhouse capital funds to complete the egress and accessibility project. Did I say that right?
You did, so good. Do I have a second? I'll second it.
I believe I need to abstain.
Oh, because you're on N E K Arts.
As president of the board, yeah.
Uh, so all in favor of, uh, using the twenty-two thousand for this project, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, and we have, and she is, we have one abstention, and he's not here, and the motion carries. And thank you for getting that project, I'm excited to have the balcony accessible.
We have town meeting there.
And to have the stage accessible, or, good stuff.
It would be cool to have a town meeting. Invite anyone to say anything they'd like, if you want.
There's also private...
Do you, do you want to invite people to, do they...
There's, there's also private functions that happen there, so there is, I mean, it's not, it's a, there's a lot going on there. It gets used all summer, so it's an asset.
Yeah, there was a...
It's a nice historic building.
Yeah.
Yeah, I dropped in on a park show that I wasn't expecting to this summer.
Yeah.
Because that's why I'm on the rail trail. Um, does anybody want to say anything relative to the townhouse?
Well, we just sold our house in Greensboro, and, uh, sorry, Brent McCoy, formerly resident of Hardwick, formerly resident of Greensboro, and now we're in, or we're looking for places to hang our hat, and the townhouse is a big reason for us to be drawn back to this place, and the services that it offers, not in jest, the services that it offers, but it's fully functional, are really robust, and it's a real, it is a treasure of a space that can be felt by artists like myself, and also by somebody who's using it this weekend for a fiftyth anniversary for their parents, and everything in between. And so here's the, the team at Netarts, and, uh, and also you guys for continuing the support, because it really, they don't make them like that anymore.
No.
Great.
Thanks.
And we're all ready to see OP back in a performance through the swimming standard or other performances that you are...
Yeah, well, the next, his next performance will be at town meeting in the townhouse.
There.
Uh, yeah.
It will.
I, I will say that you will see the townhouse in a very important place in the very near future, that will be circulated statewide, so...
I hope we see it in Hardwick.
You will, you'll see it in Hardwick and also in many other places, so...
Great.
This building is being highlighted by some very important people and places.
Nice.
Morticon.
Morticon, all right.
Houses that really historic curtains, the Charles Henry curtains that are unique and exist nowhere else, are particular ones, they exist in other places in Vermont, but this is a holding place for those alone are important. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's good stuff, keep up the good work. All right, you know, move us along, next, Select Board reports, anybody have anything to report? Our new business or old business?
My only new business slash old business is reminded of from the last conversation, and after this year's town meeting, we had a discussion about ways that we can make town meeting more accessible to more people and draw more people, and it feels like summer is ending and falls maybe around the corner, not saying that we have to make a decision tonight, but I think, um, I think it would be worth exploring ways to schedule town meeting in a way where more people can attend, so hopefully we can talk about it when we choose...
We can, I think, we should talk about it, and I'm not certain that scheduling is the main issue, but, um, but we should talk about it.
We'll talk about it, yeah.
The state should make it a public holiday.
Well, yes, it is.
No, it isn't.
State holiday, state...
Give a day off work.
Yes.
So maybe we can...
State employees.
Only state employees, it's not a holiday anywhere else, is it?
Well, the, yeah, that's a start.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a start, it's a planned start.
Um, better than nothing. That's good, so let's keep that on the radar. Any other new business, old business, or reports?
Hearing done, I would entertain a motion to enter executive, uh, the first of three executive sessions, uh, first one to look at a loan contract discussion for an economic development loan to include the town manager and the business manager.
So motion.
Second?
Uh, great, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thanks, you guys.
Aye.
Thanks for coming, you guys.